Roll call.
Ms. Dobson?
Here.
Mr. Earhart?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Rivalo?
Here.
Ms. Creveer? Mr. Sly?
Here.
Ms. Skwier? Mr. Morse?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's see. Approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. It was adjusted, but I'll... Didn't you take off number five?
Oh, that was last.
But it's on the... It's off of this, right?
It is.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Second.
All those in favor, please second five by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? It passes. Five zero zero. Citizen participation. Have anybody? Okay. You don't have anybody on a formal list, but if there's anyone that likes to... Would like to speak, you can come forward. If not, we'll move on to our first item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. September fourth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September fourth, twenty twenty five. Even though I wasn't here, I did read them, so.
I second it.
Got a second? All those in favor approving the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
I'm staying.
I'm staying. That's four zero one.
I read the minutes, but I wasn't... I mean...
Yeah, I mean, the motion can fail. You can approve at your next meeting if you'd like, or if you feel comfortable voting yes, you can. It's up to you.
Yeah, well, yes. I'm just historically abstained if I was absent. Okay.
Yeah, I was. I was too, but if you read them...
Yeah.
You can still approve.
I read, I approved it.
Great.
Okay. Next item is a public hearing on conditional use application for CU dash twenty-five dash one. Spring Hill Elementary School. We'll call the hearing open. Got a presentation?
I think you need to make sure.
Sorry, conflict of interest. Is there any conflict of interest or ex parte contacts on this item from the board members?
No.
No.
Okay. Any conflict of interest?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening. This is a conditional use permit for the Spring Hill Elementary School located at three hundred South Webster with the site plan attached. The original CUP was approved, I believe, back in two thousand and eleven. And so this... They're just adding on like a fifty-five hundred square foot building addition. So we needed to come back and kind of amend that to include it in the CUP. That's going to house some classrooms and some office space. There's no other public improvements on there. It's not going to impede traffic. It's all going to continue to flow. No additional parking is going to be needed. So staff does find that it meets the intent of the original CUP, and we do recommend approval of the conditional use permit and the site plan.
Do we have somebody from the school district?
We do.
Any... Anybody want to?
Good evening. My name is Mark Williams. I'm the executive director of operations for the Spring Hill School District. This is part of our bond that passed for us to help with capacity issues at Spring Hill Elementary. There'll be four general-sized classrooms, about nine hundred square foot, two smaller classrooms, and then a couple offices to be used in this expansion.
There it is. Any questions? Thank you. Any other comments?
I think we had some dialogue. When we... When we reviewed the site plan for this, I think there was quite a bit of dialogue about emergency exits and things. And I think the planning commission was satisfied with the site plan at that time. Obviously, this is the CUP, so it doesn't sound like anyone has any concerns.
That's a good point. Yeah, I...
It was already reviewed pretty thoroughly.
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's... It's not a large addition. It doesn't require any other modifications to the area.
Right, and at the time, as Chuck pointed out, nobody had any concerns really. If... Those concerns were addressed, I think.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Entertain a motion?
Nope, not yet. Are there any members of the audience that would like to comment on this particular item? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move forward. Commission members, any other comments or... If not, I'll close the hearing at this time. And we can further discuss this, or I'll stand for a motion.
I'm good. I moved to approve the amended conditional use permit and site plan for the Spring Hill Elementary School to allow for building additions, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first... A motion and a second. All those in favor, starting from the left?
Aye.
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 Five zero zero. Next item. We'll start another public hearing. This one related to unified zoning and subdivision regulations. Any ex parte relationships on this item?
No.
Any conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Okay. You want to have your comments?
Sure. Amy and I'll take turns tonight. How about that? I'll do my best impression of her and Pat. So zoning code amendment here before you. This is a change to permit technology in data centers. A little broader than just data centers, but that's probably a good catch-all short phrase of a development we're all kind of familiar with. Currently, our code doesn't really contemplate them anywhere. So if someone were to come ask the city if that was possible, the city has to say no. This change is adding in the capability of putting in data centers in our... Yeah, in our M-one industrial zoning districts, just as a permitted use rather than a conditional use permit or anything like that. Similar to when we changed building heights in M-one recently. This is more about giving the city, you all, the governing body and staff, a toolbox to work with developers as it's possible. This isn't necessarily in response to anything specific. You know, you're not going to see ten of these pop up at your next meeting, but it is something that as this becomes a more common development, especially in the region, the city wanted to open this up and have it be a possibility, so. You will see we're adding a definition of what an information technology center is and then adding it as a permitted use there, so.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I'm happy to talk more. Most people want me to talk less, so I can turn it over to any public comment, and you all if you'd like.
Thanks. Actually, Mr. Lyle, I've got it. I have one question. Okay. Well, just simply, so when I look at the list of allowed commercial uses, and I won't read them to bore everyone, but obviously, we're looking to add information technology facility. And I feel like there are other developments which we've approved, which are not specifically enumerated in this list. So that... Which makes me then think, does this one really have to be enumerated? You know, for example, the truck stop, the cold storage facility, those types of commercial uses are not specifically enumerated. They might be inferred from retail, maybe, limited in general, vehicle repair, general warehouse, you know, perhaps. So I'm just kind of curious why you feel like information technology cannot be inferred into any of these other categories?
Sure.
Or was there a reason those others don't need to be specifically listed, just from my own knowledge?
Yeah, sure. No, I think staff felt that because this is a specific type of development that is being proposed more and more, we wanted to kind of just get out ahead of it, and rather than coming in and saying, oh, well, we can shoehorn it in here, and then you all ask us in the future, well, hey, why does it feel like you're shoehorning this in the same way? Maybe you shoehorned in something else in the past. We figured it'd be best to put this in here. And importantly, not just say we're permitting data centers in M-one, but put in this definition in seventeen three oh two B seventy that kind of outlines what it is. Candidly, fairly broad. We want to be an over-inclusive definition rather than under-inclusive, so that we're not coming to you all with variance requests and deviation requests and things like that. But more about just putting this in our code to show that it's a permitted use and available, so.
Anything else? Any other question? I think it facilitates also people looking at the list that are... And seeing that definition in there, so.
Yes, yeah. Hopefully, also, you have a developer's looking to see if they can build here. It saves them from having to pick up the phone and, you know, as younger and younger generations take over, you know, we all know younger generations might not want to pick up the phone and ask questions, so if it saves them having to do that or saves them that five-minute phone call to Amy, that's a plus, so.
So I've got a few comments.
Go ahead.
Whenever. So I'm... I don't see any downside of adding this to the list, but I was doing some research as a part of this on data centers. And it's pretty interesting. So the net of my research is that I think, you know, adding it as a permitted use in M-one, I think that's fine. I think the location will be key, though, because there's a lot of reporting out there about the noise of data centers. And obviously, they consume a lot of electricity. They consume a lot of water potentially, depending on how they're cooled. And then the electricity is interesting, because then you potentially would need high-voltage lines with those very tall high-voltage transmission towers through existing properties in order to serve the data center. And I just... I found three articles just by searching data center from the Wall Street Journal this year, and I'm going to read just the titles in order, just to give you kind of a sense of some of the reporting that's going on. The first article's from February, and it says, "The AI data center boom is a job creation bust", which basically means lots of jobs during construction, but really not many people required to operate it. But maybe that's a positive, because we compare that to a twenty-four-seven place that has a lot of trucks in and out. You know, that's probably a positive, but, you know, it's not necessarily a job creator for the local community. The next article from earlier in September is, "Data centers that don't exist yet are already haunting the grid". It just has to do with utility providers trying to anticipate where these data centers will go and trying to figure out how much capacity they'll need, because the... Especially for AI-driven data centers, it's tremendous. You know, the amount of the power requirements are just truly tremendous. I mean, on the orders of tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of homes. So it's kind of interesting. The other thing I read was how, in the past, data centers were located close to population areas, because that would actually improve the speed of your internet service. AI data centers are totally different. These large language models, these can be, you know, you're not producing queries. These are just churning data and sort of developing its model, so they can be located more remotely. They don't have to be close to population centers. And then the last article, the title is, "Spending on AI is at epic levels. Will it ever pay off?" And that just... This article is talking about... It's comparing it to the boom of putting fiber optic cable in the ground in the late nineteen nineties and how there was a bust when the internet bubble happened. But eventually, we did use all that capacity for that fiber that was in the ground, but, you know, several large companies who put in these global fiber networks, you know, went belly up during that time. And then the AI data centers, clearly, it's a gold rush right now, and no one knows. Are they going to be able to monetize these? Where will it end? But I also would encourage you... I found a YouTube video that was posted two weeks ago. It's had almost two million views from Business Insider, and it's titled... It's a thirty-minute video, so it's pretty detailed. And it's called "Exposing the Dark Side of America's AI Data Center Explosion". And the net-net of that story is that when they're located close to residential neighborhoods, the noise, it's not like a loud noise, but it's a never-ending noise. It's almost like... the noise, it's not like a loud noise, but it's a never-ending noise, it's, it's almost like a low-level hum of a train, and it just sort of makes people crazy, and affects their mental health. The HOA reported painful and debilitating, debilitating levels of noise from the operations of Amazon Web Services Tanner Wave Data Center, which was adjacent to its homes, and in this case, it was, it's, this is in Virginia, it's very close to neighborhoods, so. Just something for us to keep in mind, so, you know, if we want to telegraph that to potential developers for data centers, that, you know, location would be key, you know, I, I live about a mile from the railroad tracks, and, and the train shakes my windows, but it's intermittent. It's intermittent, it's low-level vibration, it's intermittent, and the train was there a hundred years before I was, so it's okay, you know, it was there first, but if neighborhoods are there first, you know, I just think we need to be sensitive, you know, once we look at where would be an appropriate location for data center, but, you know, the upside is that they're not gonna have much traffic. That's for sure, and they're pretty self-sufficient.
Probably not of light pollution.
Yeah, that's true too, yeah, and it's not gonna be a hundred and forty feet tall, might be seventy feet.
Hey, I would request too, that maybe Chuck can submit those to Amy and have that, those articles sent to, not everybody has the Wall Street Journal, I do, but I mean, everybody on the planning commission and the city council should see those. Is that okay?
It's just general background knowledge.
No, and it's, it's...
And since there's no specific proposal in front of us, this is a good time for us to arm ourselves with some base knowledge.
It starts to fold into that like M-one, M-two discussion almost, you know, the low-impact, high-impact industrial areas, and how do those, and where do those locate within our city, and then where does this fold in, because, yeah, some of the networking stuff just, is just so overbearing, it's like we're going the other way, sustainability, when you're talking AI, with the energy it's consuming right now, it's ridiculous, but that's a whole nother discussion, it's, but I think it starts to fold into those two industrial zones we were talking about.
Yeah, that's a good point.
No, I, I think it's good information to have, I don't think that, that's AI, although that's what's dominating people's discussion, or not the only forms of information technology centers that pop up, so.
For sure.
Yeah, good talk, but no, I, I'm not opposed to listing it at the end of the day.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay, anything else? If not, is there any individuals in the audience that would like to comment on this particular item? Okay. If not, we've discussed it some more, or we can close the public hearing at this point. I formally close the hearing, and we can move forward with member discussion or recommendation.
Motion.
I move to recommend approval to the governing body of a text amendment to the zoning codes to amend section one seven point three zero two and section one seven point three three zero of the Spring Hill Unified Zoning and Subdivision Regulations. Third edition, to add a definition for information technology facility and to allow it's, it has a permitted use in M-one district as presented to the staff report.
Second, that's a mouthful.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, start on the left.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Five zero zero, thank you. Next item, final plat application, Prairie Ridge subdivision.
Yep. All right, this is for Prairie Ridge at Spring Hill, number five, Barstow Street and one hundred and ninety-fifth Terrace. They have submitted for about forty-five residential lots and a tract, that's on about seventeen acres. Staff finds it to be in compliance with the preliminary plat. It was sent out to all the consultants and engineering, fire department. We have, any engineering comments have been addressed. Any easements, additional easements can be done, done through the construction design process. Not much going on here, staff does recommend approval of it, and I know there's some representatives here and the owner, if you have any questions that I can't answer.
Any questions?
I have an easy question.
Yeah.
And I could probably discern this from the plat, but I get confused. So, I'm pretty sure this is a neighborhood that expressed concern here before about only having one entrance, in and out. Does this add an entrance to one hundred ninety-ninth street, or is it still the single entrance?
It's still the single entrance.
Okay, and staff doesn't have any concerns with that in terms of emergency services, or?
Like, it was sent out to the fire department, and they didn't express any concerns with it.
That was one question, the, the other, and this is R-one or RP-one?
This is R-one.
R-one, okay.
Any other questions?
Since, since it's R-one, the, the lot size has to be larger and setbacks and all that, right, than RP-one?
Yeah. And I assume it would be probably pretty compatible with the existing phase?
Yeah. For that nice neighborhood.
Any other questions or issues? If not, I stand for a motion.
If Troy were here, he would find one lot and ask a question. I don't have that talent.
Very thorough.
Right.
Well, it has to follow all the R-one guidelines and...
Yeah.
Staff pretty much has done that review, so I don't have a...
Right, yeah. Okay, you'll entertain a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of application FP two-five dash nine, final plat of Prairie Ridge at Spring Hill number five, to the Spring Hill governing body, including any conditions as presented in the staff report.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Start on the left.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five zero zero. Okay. Announcements, discussion.
So at the September eleventh, City Council, there were no agenda items from the planning commission, and then at the twenty-fifth meeting, they did approve the rezoning application, the ordinance from R-one to C-two over there off of Woodland Road, as well as the rezoning for Oakwoods, going from R-two back to RP-one. And that's all I have.
I, I had a question that Amy, you, or Spencer could answer. We've talked a, a couple of times about putting more definition on the M, M-one and splitting that out. Is that something that we... I know the, the council is interested in doing that separation, and I don't know whether we...
Sure, yeah, so it's definitely been expressed from you all in council at the moment, and I'm gonna use this as a perfect segue for what Amy was just asking me. We, the city's a little lean on planning staff, so the goal is to hire some more folks so that a new community development director gets to be a part of that discussion, rather than have it placed on them. That said, I think, Amy, we have extended an offer to a planner?
Um, yes, we have hired a city planner that will start late October, so they'll be involved in that as well, and with the comp plan and all of that.
So that'll help kind of start diffusing some of that workload, so that Amy and the staff have time to, to look at this, as opposed to just sort of being in triage mode, which I think has been what we've been doing for the last few months, so.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Is there any sense of when a new director will be brought in?
They're still interviewing, I don't know that they have found the candidate, I'm not real sure, but I know they're still interviewing.
Can you, for the most, for those of us who are still gonna claim that we're new, can you give us a sense of the city planner role versus the community development director?
Sure, I mean, the development director obviously has more, the more managerial role there, over the whole department, so there's a supervisory capacity there, there's also more of a broader aspect to the community development role that looks at attracting in businesses, being a liaison with the community, probably a deeper need to have understanding of financing and incentives, whereas a city planner probably is more hands-on with the plan review, bringing things to you all, plating requirements, things like that, so there's a significant amount of overlap between the two, but the community development director role is going to be broader than a city planner, it's gonna be additional obligations beyond just the planning aspect.
I, I think it's great, I mean, it sounds like we're adding resources, and this should allow us to have more focus at, at both ends, which would be the, the granular detail, and, and also the big picture, based on what, how you just described it, so I, I think that's terrific.
Yep.
Cool. Look forward to meeting them.
I think it's a positive move.
Yeah. You, do you have any designs to add any other staff?
For the depart, for this department or citywide?
Yeah, for this department.
Two more, building official and building inspector.
Okay. And inspector sounds self-evident, what does the official do?
Oversees the permitting process, the inspection process, does some plan review, hopefully, like building plan review. He'll, they'll do most of probably the commercial and industrial inspections.
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions? If not, I stand for a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna miss you guys, I don't know if I want to adjourn yet.
We weren't here long enough.
You were here for thirty minutes? I moved to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none, we're adjourned.